All set? Okay. Welcome, everybody. I would like to call to order the school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 19th, 2015. We have a joint session at the beginning with the Board of Selectmen, but we'll do a call to order right now, please. And just a reminder that regular school committee meetings are televised and recorded.
Okay. President Katie Dugan.
President Mary McGoldrick.
President Ellen Mar.
President Gina Stino.
And for the Board of Selectmen, may I have a motion to open a meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Roll call just for the -- President Paul Schubert.
Diane Kennedy, aye, here.
Diane Kennedy distracted. Steve Gomer, present.
Karen Quigley, present.
Great. So, this evening, we have a new member appointment before us as the first item on our agenda. And as we all know, we had followed a process to identify someone to fill our remaining seat until the spring election period. And Barbara Stephan, who is a member of our community, obviously, and a mom of students in the district, stepped up and stood out. So, we would like to offer the Board of Selectmen the opportunity, and members on the school committee, the opportunity to ask Mrs. Stephan questions, if you so desire. And she is sitting in the audience. In the audience.
You want to pull up a seat?
Sure.
I'm part of a conversation. Come on.
Do you want me to sit here or come?
No, come up to the table. So, I've become acquainted with Barbara over the last several years as a member of the studio audience at school committee meetings, but also, we've served together on the Osgead School Council. So, I'm pretty well acquainted with Barbara, but I didn't know if anybody else might have questions, comments.
I have none.
No, welcome. I don't know if you heard our last meeting and all, but I think we're all thrilled that you were willing to take this on, and it was actually an incredible pool of candidates, but you did stand out, so we're very happy you're here and willing to do this.
Steve has never had a loss for words, so maybe he has some questions.
Always have statements. Welcome, Barbara, by the way.
Thank you.
And thank you for your candidacy. The only question I have is that you, I understand, have seen the school committee in action in the past. From your perspective, your interests, what particular areas stand out for you as areas of interest and areas where you think you can have the greatest impact?
Boy, areas of -- I have a lot of areas of interest. I am really interested -- I mean, I have a general interest in curriculum and teaching, so I just find that those discussions interesting. Probably the Board doesn't deal with that as much, but I always think it's interesting to hear about reports and trends there. I have an interest in special education, and I've been going to the CPAC meetings since my son was in -- my oldest son was in kindergarten, so that's been four years, and then working as the Osgead rep last year. Other interesting, I was looking at the committees that exist, and I'm also interested in -- there's a Legislative Affairs Committee, which I don't know the details of that exactly, but I've always had an interest in government, in various levels of government, and how they work with the schools and what's being done in terms of advocacy for public education. So, I don't know if that's what you were dealing with specifically on that, but that's just an area I was looking to get involved in on my own, anyway. So, I think those are some of the main ones. I mean, I've served with Mary -- well, Mary was our rep to the CPAC, and it was great getting to work with Mary and talk about those topics. Like I said, I've gotten to learn about what the schools have to do in terms of their annual reporting through working in Osgead School Councils, and that's been good. And I've been -- Katie can attest that I am like, "Katie, I have a question for you." I was sitting on the stairs of Osgead or walking out to the parking lot. I know other moms would comment like, "Oh, I'm talking to Katie." Discussing more school stuff. So, Katie's been great in terms of, you know, explaining some of the financial stuff to me. So, but, I mean, I don't know if there's a particular area of interest that dominates one area. I'm sort of interested in everything, and I'm looking forward to understanding how each school works better. I have a little bit of insight into the high school just because I'm working with a number of seniors, incoming seniors, right now. So, just from working with those students and the parents, I've learned about -- I've looked at the course guide. I know what the courses are. I know what students are having, like, you know, what might need, you know, what's going on in the high school with their courses and that kind of thing, what kind of support the students. I've gone through all the documents on the guidance page in the high school, so I've looked at everything that's there. So, I'm aware that students are aware, so I can tell parents to actually check out the high school website. There's a lot of good resources there, that kind of stuff. I'm really curious about the middle school. I've said to Barbara at a recent coffee, I really want to understand the structure of the middle school and how that's operating, and she suggested I talk to the assistant principals. So, I don't -- I think, yeah, she probably covered a lot, but I'm just interested in a lot of things, and I've asked a lot of questions about a lot of areas.
It's like -- Mary?
If I could just make a comment, just for people that might be watching at home, because you did talk about your experience kind of with the lower grades. So, people understand your work with College Bound and what you're doing currently, because that's a big asset that you're going to bring to the Board that we're very excited about.
Right. So, I've been working for -- I do some consulting on my own, some for a small company called Campus Bound, and they basically walk students through the whole college application process. And I decided a bunch of years ago that I was interested in college counseling. I've always found college admissions fascinating, and so I worked as an admissions reader for MIT and then Wellesley College, which meant I'd read up to 100 applications a week and sit in committee making decisions about whether students are going to be admitted or not and why or why not. So, that's -- I've done, I think, three years with Wellesley and two with MIT. And then I've also counseled students, high school students, through the whole process in terms of where should I be applying, what's a good fit for me, oh my gosh, making sure it's a balanced list, test strategy, which test should I take, when should I take the test, what's the optimal time to take those tests. And then, so doing that, course selection, essay, discussing essay, generating essay ideas, how to do that, counsel -- I've done mock interviews for students. I've given them tips on what to do on a college visit, what to look for, when to start that whole process, why it's valuable to look at colleges even if around here, even if you're not necessarily thinking about going to them, just what they can learn from that experience, and help them understand what college might be a good fit for them in terms of that. Yeah, and then just helping with the timeline for getting all this stuff done, communicating with the parents and the student, because sometimes that is a very stressful process in a family sometimes, so I can negotiate that sometimes and find a common ground that works for parent and student. So, that's kind of summarizes all the pieces that I do for that.
That's great. Thank you.
I try to get in as many visits to colleges as I can.
Karen, do you have any questions?
I don't.
No?
I think your resume is very qualified, and I think the level of participation that you've shown and interest in schools over the years would be a great asset for some of us.
And that is why we agreed, we all agreed in unison, two Boards. I think that's probably not happened in a while, but your appointment, the discussion around your appointment was unanimous, that we all were very impressed and were very excited that you chose to step in.
I'm happy for me and happy for the town.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Well, then we need to take a vote to approve your appointment. Yes?
Yeah. Actually, may I make a motion, or does it need to come from the school committee?
I personally feel that the motion comes from the school committee, but I really think that you have to do your own motion, because it's a joint appointment.
Okay.
Okay? So, I will call for a motion to approve the appointment of Barbara Stephan for the remaining term of, so, 10 months, I believe it's 10 months, for the open seat on the school committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Barb Stephan for the open seat of 10 months for the school committee.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Board of Selectmen, may I have a motion to appoint or to jointly appoint Barbara Stephan to the vacancy on school committee?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor?
I think we all wanted to move it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there any more business for the Board of Selectmen?
I don't -- just a procedural question. Do we need a roll call vote? It probably would be good to have a roll call.
It's probably not a bad idea.
In the event that we do, may I amend it to the motion? May I have a roll call vote?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, do you amend it?
Aye.
Aye. By roll. Aye, Paul Schubert.
Aye, Diane Kennedy.
Aye, Steve Gomer.
Aye, Karen Quigley.
We should probably do something.
Congratulations.
Do something.
Yeah.
Now, secondly, may I have a motion adjourned for our selectmen?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you for coming out on a Wednesday night.
Congratulations. I think you see them over there.
I think I haven't been sworn in yet.
She hasn't been sworn in yet, but if you want to stay where you are, you know, I'm happy to have you stay.
Should we amend our motion?
Yes. So, could I have a motion to -- could I have an amendment to the motion?
I'll amend the motion to a roll call vote to appoint Barbara Stephan. I'll second.
I, Katie Dugan.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Ellen Mar.
So, Barbara, this is going to be confusing, though, because there are two Barbres.
You call me BJ, and that will sort it out.
I'm Barb, too.
Okay. So, we've given you some reading materials, and there are some interesting little tidbits in there. We, just to run through the agenda a little bit before we proceed with the regular business, there is information in there, there's a set of school committee goals, which we've been working on over the last few months, and a school committee handbook that we've also been working through. Just thinking that it would be helpful for new members to have that information right at their fingertips from day one. There are many other opportunities for research, if you're so inclined, through the Mass Association of School Committees. And once you have been sworn in, you'll be able to sign into their system. They'll get your name, you'll get a general law book, you'll get some other items. You'll get your card to carry in your wallet saying you're a school committee official. And then, we already spoke about the ethics exam. So, typically, when you run for a three-year term, you're expected to have training within the first year, and that's probably not going to work unless there is a charting the course that you have interest in. But we also have a joint conference in November with the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. So, if you wanted to come for a day or the whole time, which is three days?
Four days.
It's Wednesday through Saturday, so it's four days. You are welcome to do so, and we'll just have to let Barbara know to sign you up if you think that you have interest in any part of that. But you can get more information on that on the Mass website also. So, we'll take care of all of that. So, maybe we could start the regular business by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, I understand that you have to travel, so, you know, at some point during the meeting, Barb might need to leave as well. But you're welcome to stay for as much as you can scan.
I will. Have you get them current.
Okay. So, the first item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Does anyone in the audience have questions or comments? Okay. So, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Tonight, we have Ron visiting us.
Yes.
And I think combined, we'll have him come up, because part of the gifts involves Ron. So, it'll be appropriate that he comes to the table. So, we have actually two gifts to present. One made it to your package, but one came too late, I know, so we brought hard copies for the committee. This way, and --
Barb, do you know Ron Ford? He's the athletic director of the --
Did you get it?
I got it via email. Email, but I sent it in the hard copy.
Oh, okay.
So, I was asked to bring hard copies, so I did.
So, two gifts. So, let's start with the one that was in your packet and actually made it home in the mail. So, this was sent to us, Ron sent this along for the lacrosse boosters donation, August 12, 2015. He submitted a donation of $1,826 for the extra assistant girls lacrosse coaching position funded by the Cohasset Lacrosse Boosters Club for the 2015 season. You can see the check is here, and it's addressed to the school, and I think we deposited.
Yes.
Yep, there you go. But it does require a vote.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to accept the gift of the Cohasset Lacrosse Boosters Club for in the amount of $1,826 for the extra assistant girls lacrosse coaching position?
So, moved.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor? It needs to be a roll call.
Aye, Katie Dugan.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Gina Stino.
Okay. Thank you. And Ron. That was the first one. The second one that you have in front of you tonight that I passed along, that was sent along to David from the Friends of the Cohasset Football. It says, "Dear David, the Friends of Cohasset Football have pledged to donate $5,000 towards the purchase of new football uniforms. Once directed, we will deliver a check to the responsible party. The mission of the Friends of Cohasset Football is to support and promote the Cohasset High School Football Program with an emphasis on operational needs, safety and fitness, and academic initiatives. In the past years, we have helped purchase uniforms and protective equipment, boy, have they ever, sponsored specific fitness and conditioning programs, hired additional coaches and trainers, and contributed to academic scholarship programs," and also addresses that they're fully registered as a charity. "Thanks for your help, the Friends of Cohasset Football." You can see the check in the back here. It was signed by Bill Mahoney. And that, too, we are very grateful for that gift. That, too, requires a vote and acceptance.
Can you just add one thing to that, too? That was an actual donation from alumnus of Cohasset High School who contacted us last year, and as we were starting the process of purchasing uniforms. So, he donated to the Friends of Lacrosse Football. He wanted to remain anonymous, and it was given to us from the Friends of the Football.
Very generous.
Yes, very generous.
Do I have a motion to accept the gift of the Cohasset, Friends of Cohasset Football in the amount of $5,000 for new football uniforms?
I'll make a motion to accept the gift of $5,000 from the Friends of Cohasset Football to the football program in the amount of $5,000 for new uniforms.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
Aye, Katie Dugan.
I, Mary McGoldrick.
I, Ellen Mar.
I, Gina Stino.
And we are very, very honored that we have this type of support in our community. Without it, many things would not happen, so.
Absolutely. So, thank you for that. And then, Ron, before he starts on his financials and concussion policy update, you can see he did not come to the table by himself. So, and I had actually taken a picture of this last night as Ellen came to do it, too, and I said, "I realize that I'm reflected in the trophy," so I wouldn't send it. So, I've asked him to come along with it and talk about it.
I mentioned this, I think it was the last time I was at the school committee, but the Boston Globe every year has a contest, a tracking, of all the athletic programs and their overall athletic records. They take the winning percentage of all the varsity teams. And last year, for Division Four, which is all schools 700 or less, we won the Ames Award, the overall trophy for overall excellence. Our students won 73% of their games last year, which is 10% higher than, almost 10% higher than the next school. It's tremendous. I sent the email out to all our coaches last night. We'll show it to the students after preseason, fall sports night, and congratulate them for everything they've done, and the parents, and all the support of the community. But this is the fourth time we've won this in the last 10 years, and I just think that we have one of the best programs in the state. We really do, and, you know, this kind of proves it. And I just want to congratulate all the kids, the boosters, the parents, everybody, the coaches who've done such a great job, and you as a committee and as administration have supported the program. So, it's humbling for us to be able to win this again.
And that will go, what, in the case?
Yeah, we have three others in the case. We'll throw it in there. It'll help forward.
Aye.
That's very good.
That's fantastic.
Did you, Ron, did you say that this is the Globe, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do they compile the records?
Yes. They use the MIA website to compile the records. So, when we put results in of our games on the MIA website, then they go right to the MIA website to compile.
And so, every sport is on the MIAA?
Every sport's on the MIAA. These are all the teams that we, like, if we're in a cooperative team, if we're not the host school, the host school is the team of record.
Is the team of record. No, because the reason I asked is that the winter number of contests looks low in comparison to the spring.
There's, well, there are, there's some sports that you don't, they don't, like, swimming has a smaller number of contests. The gymnastics has a smaller number of contests than other sports. So, if you look across the board, a lot of schools, winter is the smallest season, just in terms of the number of contests.
Right. And then, we have a lot of spring. If you look at it, it's 93 total.
Yeah.
Seems to be almost that low. Especially high.
You have more, you have more teams and more number of contests. You know, with lacrosse, they play full 18, 20 game schedules, whereas in the winter, you have teams that play smaller schedules. So, everything that we, I enter in all the scores to the MIA website, and they take it right off the top.
All right.
And other schools do that. So, as, if we play hang them, hang them, that's the score. We enter the score, and it's on the website.
And are these varsity programs only?
Yes, varsity only.
The winningest athletic program, winningest athletic program for 2014-15 school year.
Yeah, that's the email from the Globe editor.
It's great.
All right. I just wanted to share that good news with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your time.
There's one. Two, I noticed.
Yeah. So, which one would you like me to tackle first?
Your choice.
Okay. Well, we can do the financial piece first. The reports I sent you for the winter and spring, and I also today followed up with the fall, I apologize, I didn't realize. We did the fall report in June, and we finalized the fall report with the final numbers in July, so I forwarded that to you also today. The first thing I want to say is this has been a very worthwhile exercise. Me as the athletic director, and the piece that we do to put it together is that the part-time business clerk in the business office compiles all the information as it comes in, through the bills and through all the invoices and any of the deposits I make, and she puts together reports and it's broken out by sport. That was something that was requested a couple of years ago in meeting with Boosters Club that we break the reports out by sport and what the costs are. We were able to, the first year we did it was, what, was 2013, 14, and Donna had come on about halfway through the year, and we put it together. I'm going to be honest, especially I spoke with Ellen about this, too, is that we looked at some of the reports after seeing this year's report, which I feel is far more accurate. It's still a work in progress, but far more accurate. And there's some things that we, just from our own compiling, that we realized that we left off the report. The transportation numbers were low for the winter and spring last year, but I think that this year, we're doing a much better job of putting that together. Again, still a work in progress, and Dave, we talked a little.
Still have a little ways to go.
Yeah, we do.
You know, we need to reconcile it at the end of the year to make sure we, you know, have all the costs that we incurred, show on the report and so forth, and all the revenues and so on. So, I think, as Ron says, we still have a little ways to go. And, you know, I like the idea of having one total report at the end of the year for all sports, so that you can kind of see it maybe as a summary. I know we do submit it to you by season, but I think at the end, it's probably a good idea to do it as a summary, so that we know where we stand and so forth. So.
And both Katie and Ellen, you both gave us good feedback on the reports from last year, and then this summary sheet you sent today also. Those are helpful for us. As we're putting the reconciliation together, we see things that, okay, maybe we need to do this better, we may have missed this, and we need to put this in this category.
So, actually, we'd like to submit the report again, maybe at our next meeting, so it's finalized.
That sounds great.
Because really, the one you have doesn't include everything that we need to include.
I mean, one of the ironies of it today, we found Donna, who compiles the report, left her part-time salary off of it, so we found that we were missing that. And so, those are the things that, but if we can go through this exercise, we, you know, this is helping us categorize everything. And then, one of the things we said we'd do at the last time we came was that we will build out a column in next year's report that will show the budget, as the budget was put up for the year.
So, I know, you know, I know it shows all negatives, and that's because it doesn't show the budget portion.
The budget offsets.
Right. Okay. That would be great to have.
So, I think we should show that, so that.
And I have to give you a lot of credit, because you may remember five years ago when I asked for this information, everything was handwritten. And I said, "This isn't what I wanted." So, this is great.
I've said this, you know, it's doubtful. I mean, this is, if I have to pick all my strengths, this is not my top strength, but the work of Dave and having, last year, when you were able to give Donna the assistance of having Donna in the office, it's been huge.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it helps us organize it, and there's just no way with, as you see, like, when we add things like concussion law to the plate, the more and more of these things that pile up, you know, that's the piece where I need assistance in that, and having that assistance is interesting and valuable. So, I really do appreciate that, and she's, you know, she's learning it as well as we are as we're going through it. So, and we would like to, you know, finalize the report, which we'll have it all reconciled with the law.
This is great. The trainer's salary is not in here?
It is. It's under vendors for all sports.
Oh, it is? Okay.
So, it would, if you look at the all sports line, for vendors, the trainer is under that 18, it's in there.
Okay.
But, you know, again, we'll recheck all of that, but that is what I've seen.
Okay.
Yes.
Katie? And then, Ella?
I'm sorry. I just, I realized as I was going through that I needed to rehear what was in the all sports category when I was doing the work this morning. So, trainer is one, but just the big components of it, because.
The all sports category is anything that we purchase, like medical supplies, right across the board. The MIA dues, the social league dues get put into that, our online registration form system, which I developed last year, the membership for that. Anything that we purchase that would be an item that all the sports.
My actual salary.
The coach's salary there at the end is my actual salary. The revenue for that is any gate receipts we take in, or a grant like we got to from the social playoff associates to pay for bleachers. So, that would fall into that category of revenue, the gate receipts. It's revenue that's under the gate receipts category.
But it would typically be some kind of grant that was.
Yeah, a grant was a big part of it. And then, anytime we sell hats and T-shirts at the games and things like that, that, you know, that small amount of money comes in goes into that.
That was, I'm sorry, Katie.
That was great. That's all I wanted. I just needed a recap on that one. That was great. That's all I wanted. I just needed a recap on that one.
Yeah. No, that was going to be my, my question because I found my notes. And it was all the spirit items and the grant. But I had forgotten about the grant for the bleachers. I was thinking the grant for the alcohol EDU.
No.
That wouldn't be part of it.
No, that wouldn't because that's a curriculum. That's a separate one I'd buy for this upcoming year for my ninth grade class.
Yep. So in this spreadsheet that I did the compares FY fifteen to fourteen, I did not include the fall sports miscellaneous in there because I just, I was just interested in looking at sport to sport. So if you're comparing what the bottom line number on my spreadsheet to Katie's, that's the differential in both the revenue and the expense line. Because I felt, I felt it was, for me, it's just the way I look at things. I always like to look back to last year. We saw the transportation number jump and Ron explained it. It's because it wasn't accounted for properly last year.
And this changes from here. We talked about boys hockey. It's a big jump in boys hockey. A lot of it is extra ice time that the Booster Club purchased. We went deep into the tournament this year and we had purchased a lot of extra ice time for the tournament. And then we had purchased like extra equipment that we didn't anticipate having a new JV goalie. Didn't have the equipment. A lot of times goalies come in with their own equipment. So, you know, you purchase it, you know. So those are the type of things. You see those from year to year. You see a bump, particularly like when a team goes deep in the tournament. That, the expenses.
The expenses go up.
The expenses go up, especially hockey where you spend, you know, you pay three hundred dollars an hour for ice. You know, I mean, that adds up quick.
What might be helpful, like we do with our, with our annual budget, is if there's a jump, if there could just be a note, a highlight note. Because we all like to think we're going to run over here and there.
Yeah. And that's, the questions Ellen had for me are all good questions. That makes me look at it and say, okay, you know, this is why this happened. And, you know, how can you anticipate maybe something like that happening, you know, in the future? And how can you plan for it?
Yes. Two other things. Do you think that at some point, maybe we'll get to a point on this recording, which is terrific, where we can break out vendors and we can see equipment, uniforms?
Yeah, we can break it out for.
Other things so that we can see how things cycle.
Yeah. I think, I think that would probably be the next step. Because as I build the budget, I build it out a little bit differently in the budget. You know, what the bottom line would fall to the vendors. But yeah, as we add that budget line item, I'll be able to break that out even more in this. You know, as I'm, as I'm building my way through this and working, I think that that would be the next logical step.
Okay, great. And then the other thing we've talked about, for a long time, we see the donations that come in through your office. Do we need to see the donations that don't?
That don't come in through?
Through the office. That don't have an impact on the budget but do support the programs. I.e. the subscription for Huddle that's donated by the Gridiron Club, which is the online video where the coaches download the video and the kids can see it. That's a, that's a direct, because you don't, you couldn't, when you and I talked before, you can't possibly manage everything that every Booster Club does or every team.
And I think that part of it is, you know, that's the piece. I mean, it would, the next step would be if every Booster Club gave us a financial report at the end of the year. That would really be where you would be looking, you know, for.
Or just an accounting of their donations.
An accounting of their donations, yeah. I mean, that would be something. I mean, donations like that are obviously great and specific to that sport.
Right.
You know, and then, you know, is that something that eventually, if we, we ended up pulling like something that, like that into the program, it would be a much more great expense than just Huddle for football. Because now you'd be looking at it across the board for all sports.
I'm not, I'm not saying in terms of incorporating it into the budget, but I'm just saying in terms of the acknowledgement of the.
Yeah, I mean.
You know, there's practice gear that doesn't go through your office. There's other equipment, things that don't.
I would, I would need each Booster Club to do an accounting report and then we'd have to submit that to you.
I think it's important for every Booster Club's donation to be acknowledged. I, you know, we've, we've talked about this over and over and over again. And sometimes, sometimes people want to be anonymous. But we need to, we need to know what's going on behind the scenes. We want to know how we're being supported. And I, I think it's really important for the community to understand too.
Well, maybe we could, we can have a meeting of the Booster Club presidents and maybe someone from the school committee can come and come and we can.
I'd be happy to.
Okay. And we can explain what, you can explain exactly what you're looking for.
Sure.
Okay. Ellen's, Ellen's just stepped up and volunteered.
Well, since I brought it up, I figure I might as well volunteer.
Maybe like late September, October, once we get everything rolling and everybody's busy. And once they get to the middle of the season, there's a little more time for the Booster, before they plan their banquets and stuff like that.
I mean, I'm really not interested. I don't think we need to see their P and L. But I think that, you know, they are making contributions. Am I talking about banquets and trophies and things like that?
Yeah, I mean, how deep do you want to get into?
No, no, but it, no, but it's the things that help the coaches manage the programs.
And I think that they need to understand that we appreciate their help.
Yeah.
And that we want to acknowledge it.
And I think that's great. And I think that it's definitely something that's appropriate. I think that one thing we want to also acknowledge is that not every Booster Club has the ability to make those type of donations. You know, so that's important too.
Yep, right.
Each Booster Club is very, very different in terms of how they.
They all support us in different ways.
Yes, they do.
Barbara?
I think there's an auditing factor that really, which is why we've been looking for those donations explicitly to the school committee for the last four years. Because if we are audited and balances don't check, obviously, we'll have an issue. So I think it's just, it behooves the boosters to allow us, whether, they can stay anonymous, but behooves them to allow us to recognize that we have a vote taken by the community so that we can meet those challenges of understanding what's coming in and why it's coming in.
And so I only take in donations for things that we would pay for, like coaches' salaries, uniforms, you know, specific equipment that we would use for the game. So that piece is the limit to where we take in donations, you know, officially. But I, I think that would be great. We can plan a meeting now. Would you like me to move on to concussion? Okay. About four years ago, the state put in the concussion law. And it was one of those things that was voted in June or May or June. It had to be in place in September. It was a long summer for us. I can remember our league ADs having an emergency meeting in like the beginning of August, like we need to put this together quick. And it's worked out great. We were actually lucky at Cohasset. We were doing all this stuff at a time. In fact, we actually, by letter of the law, we were actually doing more than what the law required. And some things that we just had to change the way that we presented it. But the policy, the program's been in place now three or four years. And as part of, every year we, every year we do a report, an annual report, which is included in here. Judy Collins fills that out for us as our school nurse. She's unbelievable. She tracks all these concussions that kids come in, whether they happen from grade six through twelve, whether they happen in school or out of school. She gives the kids the paperwork they need to return to practice or play with their physicians. She impact tests them before. We do a baseline impact test for all our kids every two years. So they're impact tested prior to their injury. And then after injury, Judy will test them again. And that piece of, that piece of information can be brought to the physician to help them make a good decision on when they can return to play. So all of these pieces that are in place that we've done over the past three, four years, this year, the state has asked us to update our policy. And the history behind it is the policy that we put in was very similar to almost every school in the area. Carver High School and their school legal team developed a boilerplate policy for all the schools in the area. It all basically just crafted to, or used it to satisfy the law because it was so quick when we were asked to do this. We were asked to do this within a month. So we were in total compliance with the law. But what I did this year is I asked us to review our policy and asked the superintendent and the, and the school committee to approve it, to send a letter back saying that we are in complete compliance. So what I did is I went back through the law again. I included the law with your packet, the copy of it. And I expanded our policies and procedures from thirteen to twenty-one points and specifically laid out what their responsibilities are for each person and who is, you know, what the, what are the different protocols and procedures that we have and follow at the school and who is responsible. So you'll see this, you know, as you go through this, I won't go through each point with you. But the school nurse will collect all the documentation. The athletic director and the school nurse will establish procedure of how to obtain and ensure a review. So our athletic trainers involved heavily in this also in the procedures. So I basically just laid out, going through every point of the law, what we do at Cohasset High School to make sure that we're in compliance and make sure that our kids are safe. And this also extends into the classroom. We do a faculty training and anytime a kid has a concussion, whether it's sports related or not, there's a protocol and procedure for them to return to the classroom. So all the teachers are notified by Judy that have the student, that the student has a concussion. And these will be the steps we take to return them into the classroom.
Just a quick question. So was I reading the year-end report correctly in that there were twenty-nine concussion incidents, but only eighteen of them occurred due to extracurricular sports? So there were basically eleven that occurred to students that didn't happen on kind of a Cohasset sponsored?
Yeah. We have, we have a high ski.
That was what I was going to say.
In the winter, it's, it's, it's almost weekly that we have a, particularly in the middle school, we have a lot of head injuries in the middle school from outside activities that aren't, you know, school sponsored.
When I read that stat and then I looked back at the policy and saw that the school nurse not only was taking input from the athletics, but also input from kind of the community because there.
Hardly lies. You have to manage all the concussions, whether it's a school related or not.
Well, because when they're in your building, if something happens, you know, you need to be aware of all of it.
And there was a, there was a big article in one of the local papers, I think it was the Globe, that showed, you know, named all the schools that were reporting. And we were obviously one of them. And the numbers of concussions. And we were, you know, because we're six through twelve, too, our numbers were, you know, twenty-nine's a big number, actually, if you look at it. And, and that was, it was, I think it was big just because we have seven grades under our building.
It's like three and a half, three and a half percent of your population had a concussion last year.
Yeah. And that's, and, you know, God bless her. I mean, she's dealing with, you know, three or four a month on average, you know. And she's, and she's, she does such a fabulous job of managing the whole process. Because there's a lot of paperwork involved. And then she communicates with our athletic trainers. So the kids want to get back on the field. And then Steve Budrick, our athletic trainer, is saying, okay, this is what you need to do on the first day. If you're symptomatic at all, you go right back to step one, you know. So we, and you can see kids on the side of practice. He's, he's putting the kids through some paces away from the team and they gradually return to play. So I really, the people we have are just fabulous. The two of them do such a good job. And I feel very lucky that we have them to manage this.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a question. On your, the procedures and protocols page, which is five, I think we dropped a sentence and I just didn't know, coaches? So point number five?
Yes. No, I think, I think I, I will check that. But I think I meant to cut out the school piece of that.
And then I had another question just on number sixteen, which is on the next page. So how do you, when you have parents, and having sat through a number of the athletic meetings, who, who don't do their online training and sign the form and kids, how do you kind of manage that? Do kids have to have their forms in before they're allowed out on the field or what do you do?
It's one of the more frustrating parts of it. What I've done is I've taken accurate attendance now. I've kind of handled this more myself. The first fall preseason night, everyone signs in. Donna's going to be there at the desk. Everyone, parents and kids sign in. And the coaches take attendance too. So that's everybody in the auditorium, me doing the, the very brief training that we do and direct them to the website. In the winter and spring now, I take all the students who haven't played sport before and their parents into the library and I do a separate training. So I take a separate attendance for them. And then what we do is, you know, if I get to the point where I have, a student has to, if they don't attend that preseason night, they have to have the online courses. So it's easy for me to just go back to our, especially with the online form system. I have much accurate rolls and more up-to-date information. I can shoot an email home to the parent. I, I definitely want the kids to have it. The parents, it's difficult at times, I will say, to get all the parents on board. But we're lucky. There's so many parents that go to our preseason nights anyway. So, you know, the number's small. I'll send an email home. And when I send the email home, I'll say to the parent and the student that both of you need to complete this. So those are the.
And do those forms live with, in your office or do they live with Judy?
The forms are no longer, they don't have to live anymore because I include it as part of our online registration form. So I was able to save thousands of trees. I mean, we literally, the first two years, we had giant boxes full of forms. You remember filling them all three times a year. You had, you have to do it. Because a kid can sustain a concussion during a previous season. So if you include as part of your online registration form, you don't have to collect the paper. So when they sign off on it, then I've checked off the box that I've attended a preseason meeting and that's my record. And I have a whole data field.
You had mentioned you expanded the policy from thirteen to twenty-one points. Which points are new? I should know this by heart.
Honestly, a lot of it is new. It wasn't like I added eight more points. I actually recrafted the language. It was so broad, it looked like, and it covered us. But there wasn't specific, like, you know, I think one of, in the, the email we brought from the partner public health, they were asking for more specifics of what you do with your policy. Now, they approved that policy for everybody when we, when we first did it. But I think, and it was hard for us to do a specific policy because we hadn't done it before. You know, like who's in charge of like, oof, we're going to have to figure that out as we go, you know. So it's, I'm confident that this, we cover every aspect of the law with this. And I think that it's, it's, it's good for us now to know who's exactly. I'm going to give this to Judy and Steve. You know, we have this all laid out. Not that we don't know it, but it's all right now.
Two more questions.
Okay.
Go ahead. Sorry. Number seventeen. You had all the athletic department staff were required to complete the NFHSlearn.com.
Concussion, two courses, yeah.
How often?
Every year. So I know the football staff sits down together and does it. At each office. And every year, that's a yearly requirement. I have to take it every year. I can teach the course.
Okay. And then I just, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Go ahead. Finish up.
On eighteen, it talks about technique. But I, I know that over the last several years, the football program has received better helmets. They're not concussion proof, but they're.
Well, we've always bought the, we've always bought Riddell's. And Riddell is a company I like because they're so research-based. They have so, it's a long history. We've always bought their higher end. So we've transitioned from what was their higher end, which is that they call a, a, I think it's a gold star level helmet. And we just transitioned to their newer gold star level helmet. So we are, we're always at that level for them. But that, I feel like, I feel strongly that our equipment is always at the top level. And also they taught new techniques last year, which are some of the tech, are right now the stuff that's being put out by the CL Seahawk put it out and they taught that. That's being widely recognized as a very safe way to reteach the skills.
Do you see the manufacturers of the helmets and the other sports, like specifically hockey and lacrosse, also evolving?
Lacrosse is already going down that road, that they're, they're taking steps to improve their helmet safety. And at this point, because our kids use that equipment so much out of season, they purchase their own helmets. But we just have to, we check to make sure they're Noxi certified and that they're. So there's a variety of helmets on the teams. But we have, I, we go through and make sure they're all checked. They have to be stamped and taken. So they can't have like a, you know, they can't have a helmet that's not a Noxi certified helmet.
Just one more little question. Just for clarity on your, on your procedures and protocol for number seventeen. It might be helpful if you said each year, comma.
Yes, okay.
And then will this document live, will the policy live within our policy manual online? Or where, where does this live?
I will put, I put it on the concussion management section of our, on our website. It's there now, the current policy and the new website's developed. And this will be on that once, once it's approved and we make any edits that we need to make to it. They, they suggest that you put it in the student handbook. I don't know if that's, you want to put it in the student handbook. It'll be in the athletic, it'll be on the athletic website as part of our athletic handbook.
The student handbook is going paperless. It's going to be available online. So there, there's no reason why it kind of.
I leave that decision to you, where you guys want to. I know it will, it will exist on the website as part of my concussion management.
Well, I would just suggest, since there were a fair number of non-athletes that had concussions, that it live in both places.
Oh, absolutely. I think it should live in both places. But I think that the student hand, I think the student handbook is a great place to include it.
Yeah, I do too.
And I have one, one question. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just want to circle back to what Mary said because I had the same question jotted down in terms of when we have our policy binder, generally it goes into a section. It's marked, you know, EAC seven.
Dash one.
Exactly. My, my question was.
Mary's an expert. She knows all of them.
My, my specific question was where is this going to live or does this live in that binder somewhere?
I don't remember.
I don't either.
And it's been so long since I've been able to really look at.
I would have to look as I.
An up-to-date binder.
I'll have to look and get back to you for the next meeting. So it would certainly be easy enough to find a home for it online.
Yes. And hopefully, once the new website is up and running, we'll have an athletics page.
Pretty close. I know.
And it'll be a.
I hit the train on Tuesday. I'm coming back tomorrow.
Very good.
So probably one of the things we could do because of what we are doing with the website and actually because we had just come out of date too and Mary and Ellen were there at that moment as we pulled out, they got to see some, they got to see what we're doing with the school committee section. So maybe what we could do is add that in as another section under the policy and then just have a separate concussion policy. I just think it's good to have it in more than one place.
I agree. Because you're right. I mean, a third of the concussions were outside of.
Yeah, we can make that another subject piece inside that under the, the school committee. That's something the committee would like. I mean, I'm looking across, now they have a whole archive to look at. What's going to happen is when you open the tab, obviously there'll be a policy handbook. What's gonna happen is when you open the tab, obviously, there'll be a poli, the policy handbook, we have to redesign inside there, but we can have a separate tab underneath, you know, that would nest it under there, the concussion policy.
Okay, I think we just, I think we need to, it's part of the bigger discussion around getting that whole policy binder.
Well, it's going.
Online, and then just finding the right nesting spot for it.
It would be below, I think, the whole policy, is what I'm saying. You have your school committee policy, now we put the concussion policy right below it.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be visible, is the plan. I have a question on the application. Okay, on page two, under the new optional questions?
Yeah.
Number six?
Yep, it's wrong.
Okay, see, we're paying attention on it.
I saw that too.
We are reading it.
Judy, no, I appreciate Judy, when Judy sent that in, I don't think she understood that question. So I, I, I reme, I emailed it to, she sent in a hard copy, and I re-mail it, I wanted, I waited till today to, to go through this policy piece, so I can also include, when we finish this, I'll include a, a copy of this, and then we'll send the official letter out.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, I, I noticed that too.
Great, and I had another question, but I don't remember what it was, because I didn't have the hard copy with me, so I didn't jot down a note. It was on page twelve of fifteen of the, the law and the information, so if I come back, I can circle back to it if I.
You can always spot that, you can, and what we'll do is, I'll make any of the corrections that we suggested tonight forward to superintendent, and you have to craft a letter of affirmation anyways, if you guys approve it.
Right.
And that will, we'll send that out, and we can, you can, we'll have some time.
And whenever we adopt or amend a policy, we have a two-read rule? So I guess this would count as the first read, and then with the edits, could it be the second read? So do you think that that would be ready for September second?
Question is due date.
The due date's September thirtieth, that's why I brought you.
Okay, okay.
So we have plenty of time to make any change.
Yeah, I looked for that, and I didn't see it.
That's why I requested you come in.
I saw that August thirty-first on something, but I think that was just the app, just the report.
Yeah, the reporting, so I, I wanted to give you guys enough time to make any changes and do the, the prior reading.
September.
So you want it on the September second agenda, just so I have the right date?
Will it be, well, it's, that's two weeks, that'd be two weeks.
Yeah, just to make sure, I know where we're putting it.
So I'll, I'll send the edits.
I would use that one.
And then we drop the letter of affirmation that night.
Yes, we will, building your page.
And we have a question from the audience.
As a, you know, as a parent of a multiple concussed athlete, I can't impress upon parents enough how important this training is. It was, you know, prior to all of these laws, and the, the programming that Cohasset does, and, and that the state does, is so important and so fantastic, but I have, so I'm always following these things. The mouthguards, what I read is mouthguards equally important to the helmets. What kind of mouthguards do we give our athletes these days?
There's a lot of, I think, contradicting research on that. Are, are soon athletes in the sport like lacrosse and football, any sport they're required to wear a mouthguard, they do. And they're just the regular mouthguards that, because it hasn't been anything that conclusively develops that they say will absolutely, you know, prevent a concussion.
Not prevent, but Dr. Cantor will write about the importance of mouthguards, and so will Dr. Ken.
And we encourage anyone who wants.
And better than a basic one.
I think we encourage anyone who wants to, you know, pursue that route, and we certainly would let them pursue that route. I, there's very few schools I know that have gone beyond that. I think the way that we go through mouthguards too, is unbelievable, I mean, we go through more mouthguards than we can imagine. And so I think they, if, a lot of kids do purchase their own mouthguards, there are a lot of these, especially with kids with braces will have special mouthguards, and kids who have had concussions before have done it. Schools have done that route and gone back away from it, that I know of. It's, it's, I don't think the, I don't think the research has totally, such a time, sensitive, a time longevity type study piece. If, if the company came through and became more of a regular requirement, that would make more sense than this.
I mean, Dr. Cantor's pretty much the foremost expert in.
Absolutely, I'll disagree with that, but I, I don't know of any schools that are purchasing high-end mouthguards across the board for all their athletes.
And also, is there a way we could, is there a reason why we don't do the baseline annually? I mean, we can get.
They suggest every two years.
I know, is there a reason why Cohasset can't do it annually? They can get concussed in the summer, and then if they have a second one in the fall, they're in trouble. Or they won't even know if they've been.
The recommendation from, no, you would do follow-ups. The recommendation is every two years from, they really feel like, everything that they've said in Impact Training, you don't need to do it more than every two years for the baseline. Originally, we only did it once in four-year cycle, and we were able to increase our membership to do that. And seen anything that suggests you should do it every year there, every year.
If he gets a concussion in the summer, is kind of unaware of it, because the parents never took this class, and then they start sports, wouldn't it be helpful to have a baseline done before they start fall sports?
Uh, yes, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I don't know if the baseline's gonna change that much, is what the research has said from Impact. And, you know, it's part of the, of the forms that we write, that, that we're relying on, the parents who gives the accurate information. We, you know, concussion happens in the summer, that's why we do the forms every semester. So we rely on that accurate information.
They may not understand it.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we train them too. But, no, they're all good points. But I don't thi, I think that would be a requirement of more than every two years, would be over the, in terms of what Impact has set up.
Sorry, one more question. Does every student get a baseline test, or just every student athlete?
Oh, I'm sorry, every student athlete gets one every two years.
So if you have a non-student athlete that gets a concussion outside, and you're now, the school, the school is now responsible, how do you know?
You know, that, we haven't, we haven't baselined them, so they wouldn't get, they wouldn't go through the Impact. The Impact system is just another tool to determine, and a lot of, some physicians don't put a lot of weight in it, I'll be honest with you. It's just something that we provide. You know, if it's, if it's something that we felt that every student, you could do with every student in, in the grades, what we do is just by team, and it's, and we end up getting eighty, eighty-five percent of the kids that way, you know? Because that's what we, we're, you know, we're dealing with that. It wouldn't be impossible for us to do, I think it would actually probably still fall under our subscription. There's levels of subscription that you pay for, and that gives you, like, I think we get three hundred baseline tests per year, plus sixty post-injury tests per year. So like, especially if we, if we do multiple baselines on it, it's good to have, you know, if we had twenty-nine this year, that would give us enough to give every kid two, if they needed it, not all needed. But yeah, that's a good point, like, the kids who aren't in the program, the middle school students, we don't baseline the middle system. And a lot of it, the research out there, they, they do recommend it, the kids are playing like youth football and stuff like that, but they, they're still in development, that's stage two, and it basically, the Impact may not be as effective, maybe at that age as it is at high school age.
So just to, in summary, or to sum things up, just a reminder to the folks watching at home that the fall sports preseason info night is on Monday, August thirty-first, at six forty-five in the high school auditorium. And if your child needs a physical, which all, all students need physicals before they can start preseason training and, and playing, if your child needs an exam, and you can't get a doctor's appointment, the school physician is available on August twenty-fifth, beginning at seven a.m.
Thank you, you saved, I was. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
It's great. And we sent out a Blackboard connect, this is, this past week, with all that information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One that I had this morning, one this morning, just for your reference.
Is this a new one?
It's a new one.
Based on Ron's.
Not the one that we got.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's updated.
With Ron's changes. Yeah, Dave's here. Let me just throw out whatever I emailed this morning.
Good spreadsheet files this morning.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Next time, we can keep going.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is finance.
No, you're not usually on until nine-thirty.
I know.
And we're only fifteen minutes behind. It's all good.
Well, we, we requested approval from the school committee to pay warrant sixteen oh-four S. And I believe Mrs. Estino had taken a look at the addresses.
I did, I did, I came in and looked it over, so could I have a motion to approve warrant sixteen dash oh-four S?
I'll make the motion to approve warrant sixteen dash oh-four S.
And do I have a second?
I'll, I'll suck it.
Okay, all in favor, roll call vote please.
I, Katie Dugan.
I, Mary Boulter.
I, Gina Estino.
Ellen Marb, Stino.
Okay, so then the next items are school committee comments and communications. The first item on this section is agendas and minutes, discussion of process and procedures. So we have quite a few minutes, meeting minutes, that are, have not come to us for approval yet. So we are, I would like to develop some kind of a strategic plan to get this done. And I would suggest, I would like to suggest, and, you know, my table mates can weigh in on this, I would like to suggest that at the very least, going forward, we have the previous meetings minutes on our agenda, and then one past meetings minutes on the agenda, so that we can keep current on the, on the meetings that are upcoming, and chip away at the ones that we need to make some progress on. We also have a number of executive session minutes that we will need to approve, that need to be brought forward and approved. So we need to work on those also. We're, we've gotten to the point where we're really way behind, and it's a real problem.
So I could just make one comment, I did speak with Diane Kennedy, who's on the Board of Selectmen, and they had a similar situation with their executive session minutes, and you may already know this information, but those minutes can really just simply be one or two sentences about the topic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And they went through the same process, they just took a bunch and chipped.
Right, just for the public's information, most of the information in the executive sessions, you don't really release the minutes until the subject is no longer valid. But much of what's contained in our school committee minutes have to do with personnel issues, contract negotiations. It's all, most of that is information that really shouldn't be public. You know, it's the back and forth, and it couldn't ever be captured verbatim, which is never what you want to do for minutes. So we really, that, that should be the easiest part, to just have those minutes. We could probably do six of those at a time. It, it really shouldn't be a problem, yes?
For executive sessions prior to Katie and I joining the board, is there an issue with the approval census?
No, actually, there's not an issue with you approving minutes for meetings that you were not at at all, as long as you, and I did speak with somebody at M A S C about this, as long as you are comfortable that the content is accurate. So for example, you've both been at many meetings before you were on the school committee. If you read through those minutes, and you say, you know, I was at that meeting, and I think that there was something else going on, then we could go back and research it a little bit more, but we do need a quorum to vote for them.
Okay, several of the outstanding.
Absolutely.
Regular sessions.
Yes.
Were prior to our arrival.
Yes. So those, again, as long as you're comfortable that what's been captured in the minutes is appropriate, then you can absolutely feel comfortable voting on them, because we do need a quorum to vote on them.
Okay.
Okay?
And can I just ask a question, a few meetings ago, we just talked about the procedure going forward. I did have two meetings of minutes that I received, forwarded them to you just with my comments. How do you want to handle, or, I mean, as a group, how do we want to handle that? Do you, do you want me just to push them along? Do you want comments, do you, what's the best way to?
Well, actually, you had, you had some comments about something that, you know, had happened in a meeting. What we really need to do is discuss the changes. So all of us sending our comments to somebody to be compiled in the minutes, that's really not the way to go about it.
Okay.
Okay, so the way to really handle it is to bring your comments to the meeting, and to add it, so that it gets added into the public record that those changes are being made. Okay?
Great.
All right.
So in the future, when I receive minutes either from Tracy or Jennifer.
They should go directly into the packets.
Okay, so I will.
I mean, you, you can, you're the secretary, so ultimately, you're.
I'll make my notes, I might post it.
So, so you can check them over for accuracy, if there's something that you thought that was left out, you could certainly talk with Tracy about it, and she might say, oh, yeah, I had that, but I wasn't sure how to capture that. But the basic minutes as they stand should be sent directly to us, so that we can look through them and make sure that they're to our recollection.
I'll receive them and send them to Barbara or Jennifer, just to go into the packet.
Right.
Beautiful, thank you.
Yes.
So I just want to just revisit the, kind of the procedure going forward in terms of how we catch up. I think Ellen did a great job in kind of going back through, and we have nine public sessions
Uh-huh.
that we need to catch up on. Do we have?
That's just since the spring?
Well, it's.
Is that, was that just since the spring, or did you go back further?
I went back to January, so.
And I, I do, we do have two of them here that I will pull up to you.
I have to.
And then we had the third, you actually had December third and December tenth too, I think, I have your.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, exactly, so you, I didn't know how far back you went, so I guess my, my question is, Ellen did some preliminary research for us, which identified from December, are we comfortable that pre-December is in good shape?
I think we have to do a little bit more research.
I think I looked at that, but I'm not sure.
I can't remember.
Because eleven fourteen is posted, and maybe that's.
Part of the problem is the lag because of, because of the website. So I'm hopeful that once the new website is up, and that things will be accurate, and we can track easier.
I, I think also, if you don't mind my commenting, the fact that we got the, I know in February, I turned over seven minutes, but because the video hadn't come up, they got pushed off, and they never came back to the table, so they're just sitting sort of out in limbo, never having been approved. The videos are not going to come as fast if you're looking for those minutes, so the decision has to be made by the committee. Are you going to approve the minutes without seeing the video again, or are you going to hold back? Because if you have to wait four or six weeks for the video to come along, you're gonna always have a backup.
Right.
So the decision has to be made, what are you gonna do? And that's where the backup came, starting in February, that once we didn't do one of those sets of minutes I turned in, it just backlog.
Well, we did approve some pending potential comments, once we had the chance to approve. So we can, we can work on that. But going forward, I would really like to see the last meetings minutes, and one older set, maybe the oldest one. And then we'll work forward on the old ones, and progress through the new ones.
Well, I've shared your dates with Jane, the ones you sat in, that's, I mean, I showed them with her.
And, and I'm happy to review last year, so.
That would be great.
Okay, so, okay, so starting in fourteen.
That'd be great.
Just have to look and see if we're all.
Yeah, just, look, if you go on the, on the website as it exists, there are many sets of minutes there, so if we could just.
On the school website.
Yeah, on the school website, under the school committee tab.
Yep.
So, Mary, you'll get an accurate count of two thousand fourteen open minutes, that's great. And then on the executive session minutes, I think we also, at some point, need to get an account on those from two thousand fourteen.
Absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely, yes, Ellen.
Just relative to Barbara's comment, I, I would advocate that we approve the minutes, and if we see something materially different in a video, whenever the video comes out, we can bring it back to the table for, for an amendment and a motion.
Absolutely, that's.
But I'd like to get them.
Yep, moving.
Moving, and, you know, approved, and, and if it's, if, if it's, the proximity is one meeting removed, then we should all pretty much have that meeting fresh.
Yep.
Absolutely. Any other comments? Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is school committee goals. And this is a one sheet piece that has been developed. Do you want to talk about it, Mary? Did you shoot?
Sure.
Put them together after we've met with a representative from MASC.
So one of the procedures we went through this spring as a school committee was something called the governance project. And some of you have heard about that. We had a field director from MASC come out and work with us as a team. When we had members departing and entering, we had our new members come in and also weigh in, weigh in on the goals too. So Ellen and Katie have had a chance to see them, but they're new to Barbara this evening, obviously. But it, this hasn't been done, at least since I had been on the board. And it is recommended by the Mass Association of School Committees that school committees have goals. And they're public and they're approved as a body. So we would like, I don't know if you want to read through them this evening.
Sure.
We also talked about potentially having a public hearing on those at some point perhaps. I'm not sure what meeting you would like to do that.
Well, I'll look at the schedule with Barbara and see what I'm meeting. We're going to talk about the meeting calendar too, so.
Okay. But including these, and also we have some protocols that we would like to open up to a bit of a public hearing discussion for the community to weigh in if they would like to as well. So that was the genesis of this. We can all take turns reading a point.
Okay, do you want to start with number one?
Sure.
So just as a framework, there's four points and four school committee members.
Well, five, well, five.
Maybe we should put out a goal.
No.
So the first school committee goal was to develop a report card for measuring district and student achievement by June two thousand sixteen. There were four sub-bullet points. The first was determine appropriate peer groups for Cohasset School District based on a variety of factors. Examples included size of district, socioeconomic factors, geography by December fifteen. Evaluate and determine metrics to be measured in the report card. Examples include student achievement, classroom size, college readiness, college fit, instructional technology curriculum by February two thousand sixteen. Hold a public hearing to review and collect public comment by April two thousand sixteen. And prepare an initial report card for review and comment by June two thousand sixteen. And the genesis of this goal really came from some discussions that have, since I've been watching the school committee. Kind of repeated itself around the fact that we often get external report cards from US World and News Report or NISH. Which give us a sense of how we're doing, but often the factors that are in those report cards in terms of how they're measured change. So year over year comparisons become difficult, but more importantly, it's not necessarily what we want to measure about our district. So the thought was, let's develop our own report card. We may choose to include some of those factors that get included in US News and World Report or those other ones. But really control and determine who we want to measure ourselves against and how we want to develop that report card. To hold ourselves accountable as a district.
Someone want to read number two?
Sure. Number two is re-envision and update strategic plan for the Cohasset School District by June two thousand sixteen. The bullet points are to work collaboratively with the superintendent and senior leadership team to develop strategic plan for the school district. Ensure involvement of all schools constituents in the strategic planning process. Assist and participate in focus groups, surveys and peer district interviews as needed. Hold public hearings to review and receive public comment by May two thousand sixteen. And publish strategic plan for district by June two thousand sixteen. And two, just to clarify this a little bit, this is something that Barbara and her leadership team are obviously creating. And we will weigh in on as is appropriate and then take comments from the community as is appropriate too.
Ellen, do you want to read the next?
Sure. The third goal is emphasize consistent, timely communication with the community. And ensure that key school initiatives are explained through a variety of media channels. Leverage the school committee section of the new website to communicate FY16 goals, strategic planning process, operating protocols. Superintendent's goals, policy changes, meetings scheduled, archive presentations and videos of school committee meetings. Develop an annual calendar of items to be reviewed and discussed by school committee to facilitate community involvement by October twenty fifteen. Ensure that planned upgrade of district website enhances overall communication and improves functionality for teachers and parents. Functionality, such as grades, fees and permission slips. And communicate as needed via local news channels regarding school related issues of community interest such as the technology plan. Major policy changes, enrollment and financial and budget issues.
And number four, professionally manage governance objectives during fiscal two thousand sixteen through the following initiatives. Adopt school committee handbook and hold public hearing on operating protocols by September twenty fifteen. Support development of financially responsible school budget which promotes student achievement and follows published school budget calendar. Utilize qualitative and quantitative data and benchmarking information to inform decision making regarding operational policy and financial matters. Form superintendent evaluation subcommittee to assist the school committee in development and monitoring of superintendent's goals. By utilizing published evaluation calendar. Engage in professional development activities as a school committee including MASC conferences, regional meetings and other legislative conferences. And review and assess school committee goals and school district report card by June two thousand sixteen. So some of these items we're already working towards, some of them we have accomplished.
Partially.
For example, the school committee handbook. And then we just discussed a few minutes ago, having a public hearing to discuss that and work on operating protocols. The next meeting, how, how does the next meeting look forever for that? In terms of how many items you might have on that?
On September second.
That meeting, as I recall, doesn't look too.
Opening day, mentor program, introduce new teachers, a couple of other items on here, so.
All right.
Probably, you should, I would imagine you could do it.
Yeah, and we're going to have to put the concession policy on there. Hopefully we'll have some minutes to approve. Maybe we'll even have a website presentation, but that's probably not until the second meeting.
Oh, you might be surprised how much we did today. Even Mary and Ellen saw the school committee section.
That's good, okay. So that'll give the community a little bit of an idea of what we'll be doing through the year in addition to our regular business. Anybody have any questions, comments? Yes?
Elaine Child, seventy-three pondry, CPAC president. Quick question, the administrative offices, community room. CPAC has normally held our monthly presentations in the library. And we are, because of the homework club and REC has taken over our world, the homework club is now in the community room. We have talked to the superintendent and we are now moving to the community room on Tuesday nights. And this is a win-win for everyone because the one thing we hear from everyone is, we couldn't make it, can you televise it? So now that will be a goal that we had that we have now accomplished. Just curiosity, how is that whole television thing going in that room?
So August, August thirty-first, they will, Comcast is coming to do the fix. If it's fixed, then we can be back in obviously on September second unless there's any.
Unless there's any problems.
Problems that will require additional days, but they've been scheduled for August thirty-first for a few weeks now. So that's how it's going.
So that sounds good.
We're all.
I know you guys want it, if you want to be back in your space.
Absolutely.
Well, it's actually beautiful. It's just been tiled and you're waxing. The whole place has been done over. It's been painted. There's no carpet. Sorry, but it is beautiful. It's all been cleaned up.
Okay, great. Yeah, where does it get televised? Is it recorded and then televised later?
It's usually televised at all times.
Teledis.
Maybe, maybe Christian could answer that, how that works.
We could do a live broadcast or we could record it and play it later. So if you did, if you did a live broadcast, you'd probably decrease your numbers.
Right.
So you might not want to do that, but if you did, if you did the recording, you could play it at a later date.
Well, we have to sit down and talk to you because we have confidentiality issues and things like that. A little more different than a public meeting. This is a more of a presentation or a workshop, so we have to respect the parents who don't necessarily want to be on camera. It just focuses on the presenter who is already published publicly anyways.
But as we spoke about it, some of our CPAC lunches, this is great because you can then have a video archive of your speakers. As long as they, they're going to have to sign off on this too, I'm quite sure. But it gives you a lot of options, which would be great.
Yes, it is one thing that we've heard constantly from parents that we'd love it to be televised. I have little kids, I can't get out. And same thing is coming to a school committee.
Yeah.
Great, so Barbara will just contact your office to make sure that's, once we get our first. Obviously, you guys will already be in, so.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the school committee handbook.
Yes.
So when I sent this forward, I did incorporate comments. I had your comments regarding the secretary position and then your comments. Unfortunately, it's printed in black and white, so.
Okay.
You probably found them, but additions are on, at the bottom of page one. The bottom of page two, under how we communicate. Page four, under secretary.
You can see them?
Yeah, they're a little, a little lighter.
Oh, I see them, I see them, yep.
The top of page five, including superintendent evaluation subcommittee. The top of page six, under goals, second line. And I think that's it. The changes were pretty nominal, but the, I thought that the edits were really good.
Yes. So our plan, our plan is to approve this and adopt it. Is everyone comfortable with that based on the fact that we didn't have to color for the changes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, because this is probably the fourth time we've moved forward. So I would entertain a motion to accept the Cohasset School Committee handbook.
I would love to make a motion to accept the Cohasset School Committee handbook.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so it's, yes, a lot of hard work went into this. So it is adopted as of August nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. That's great, so we can just add that date to the cover? And then make sure that the changes are the same printed as everybody else? And then just, I mean, I don't need a new copy.
I don't either.
Just a new cover. It's not the new cover. It'll be on the website, we'll put it up tomorrow.
That's great.
On the new one, so it won't be showing.
Right, so we won't be able to find it.
Clarify it.
Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the draft annual calendar. So superintendent goals, capital items, good, that was one that I was going to ask about. Possibly the website presentation. And definitely the concussion policy.
I'm sorry, you're talking about for September second?
For Septem, for September second, yes.
Okay.
And then the, the, actually what it says for August twelfth, the capital items needs to move to the September second.
So just to clarify, as I know there had been a thought that will we come and bring it forward? They all do this Friday, actually, and traditionally in the, since I've arrived, the committees never asked for us to present in advance, only after we've submitted. So of course we've worked on that pretense this year. But we had definitely, I had talked to Jean about not putting it here because Ron Menard and I want to sit and talk about the technology for sure.
Yeah.
So I had already notified Chris's office that we'd be at least a little late beyond today, this week. But I also then notified them that we'll be putting it on the September second committee meeting. So they'll be coming in after this. So I just want the committee in fairness of making sure, making a stand, if they're not do the thirty-first, they actually do August twenty-first. But I've already called the office up here to let them know it will be at least September third, just so the committee knows.
Yep. Yeah, that's down. And I, when we were at the capital budget meeting last, was it last week?
Two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah.
I requested to be put on their agenda distribution. Because last year I wasn't aware of most of their meetings and sometimes schools, sometimes at a meeting we discovered that they were discussing school things that even you didn't know. So I think that that's important for us to know what's on their agenda. I get advisory and a couple of other committee minutes and agendas in my email. So I did request that, of the chair, that he include me on the distribution. So hopefully we'll be well informed. So also on the August twelfth, we were supposed to have the superintendent's goals, but you hadn't met with the subcommittee yet.
We just planned today.
So when do you anticipate that that will be added?
We're hoping for September second.
Okay.
That's the plan barring unforeseen circumstances.
Okay. All right, so both of those items just move down. Okay. Katie, yes?
Just a quick question, so just, and sort of an observation because as we kind of go through the agenda. There were two subcommittees that I think have important calendars that play into kind of finalizing this. One is the superintendent evaluation subcommittee and the other is the finance subcommittee. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, one of the charters was to put together kind of a calendar of when things were going to be due. Similarly, I'd reached out to Barbara to get a meeting with her and Dave to begin to work on a budget calendar. So I think, I'd like to see the subcommittees kind of report out on what their recommended timelines are before we kind of set in stone. I think we can kind of slot in things, but I think we should defer to the subcommittees in terms of what they develop. And then, you know, bring to the broader committee around actual timelines that are correct. So I just wanted to raise that now.
Sure. Also, we had discussed briefly at our last meeting, the possibility of meeting every other week instead of twice a month. And I wanted to revisit that with the rest of the committee and see what you think.
I had one thought, if I might. I think that given some of the work that's happening on, I'm wondering if we, I think we may need to add a meeting or two for sure within the year. But I'm wondering if some of the work can be taken care of by perhaps a little more planning on the subcommittee, on the subcommittees. Just in terms of when they're meeting and then when they would report out, kind of dovetailing on what Katie just said. And, because there's, there is a little bit of redundancy within the calendar here, obviously.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, you don't know when things are going to pop up.
And, and it's kind of fluid, like last, on the last meeting agenda, I had a couple of items and Barbara said, well, no, we're not ready for that yet. Okay, so we'll move it to the next meeting. The capital items was, was a specific one that we discussed. So I would say that we could here and there add a meeting. But my goal in doing this is to not be here until ten thirty every night. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't shut that off.
And then another comment that I just had, to get to that goal of not being here until ten thirty. Was when you, when we do have situations, obviously looking at September sixteenth. We know we're going to have some executive session items. Where it's, where it's feasible, based on your schedule, Dave and Barbara, and our schedule and whatever Barb, Stefan's schedule turns out to be. If we could hold those prior to our meeting starting on some occasions as opposed to after.
Right.
They tend to be fairly serious events and just dive into those conversations at ten o'clock is not great.
Oh, absolutely. This, the one for this evening was specifically because we were already starting at six thirty over the appointment. So, you know, tip, I, I, trust me, I don't want to be here until eleven o'clock hashing out things. I don't think anybody does. But if you look at that September sixteenth meeting, it's got a lot going on.
It does.
Maybe some of the things won't happen then, I don't know. But it looks like that one's going to be an all-nighter.
So to, I'm sorry, to that point then, are there things on September sixteenth? So, I'm sorry, to that point then, are there things on September sixteenth that could slide to October seventh?
Yeah.
Like college process for seniors? I assume, Barbara, that's on here, because this is when we did it last year?
It's when, yeah, when we mapped it out in June for the retreat. No, it actually isn't, because some of it is, but when we sat as a leadership team and we mapped out where we felt things should go as a leadership team. That's how some of these things came in. And then some of the other items were inputted from what I learned from you folks.
Okay.
Of things you might want, you know, we've never had the benchmarking grid in there, but now we do, so that's come in, so I put it there. On the other hand, I think, aren't you talking about it tonight?
Yeah.
Are you planning to talk about it again on the sixteenth, I guess would be the question? Or is that something that we come up?
I think.
To move it.
Yeah, well, yeah, we could definitely move it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not asking you to move anything, I'm just suggesting, you know, something when you see the word enrollment, you know that's basically very short.
Right.
Forty-five seconds, so you, even though it's there. Hiring updates is a much shorter process.
Okay.
Hopefully, you'll see it on our website by then. If I could just add too, so thank you so much for putting this together, because this is helpful, because then we can say, all right, you know what, that's, we don't need to hear about that right away, and we can move it forward and have more manageable meetings. So I'm wondering too, if there are, in regards to October twenty first and November third, you have a pretty thin night, November third. We can push some things forward or back, as it might be appropriate.
And there, actually, we have a lot of items on the school committee section this time. We may not have so many, as we could move forward. That could, that section could be a little bit shorter also. Just had some things that we needed to tighten up. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Just a couple of quick comments. I think in most places, I like the idea of obviously having a bus and a, bus and a transportation update, but I think we're listing them twice. We've got a bus maintenance update and we've got a transportation update. I think we can just collapse that into a transportation update and that'll, so on September sixteenth, we can collapse those two, it'll make us feel better.
Dave doesn't get out of it just because you took his part out.
Exactly, no, I've.
It's basically the same.
All right, yeah, so I'm collapsing it into one line and putting both your names against it, exactly. Similarly, I think we can just call on the September sixteenth, that instead of having the budget calendar and the FY seventeen budget process, let's just call it FY seventeen budget process and the finance subcommittee will have met before then with Barbara and Dave. And the topic that we'll be discussing as the FY seventeen budget process is the calendar that day.
All right, well, and just note though, that part of that was, I was requested to make one part executive session and one part not, if you notice.
On the budget? Oh, no, oh, no, I'm actually talking, no, there's actually, it's on here three times, Barbara, you've got the budget calendar and then third from the bottom.
Fair enough.
I'm collapsing those two, I'm leaving the budget analysis, the executive session piece of it.
Fair enough.
So I think that, that does a little cleanup and those comments are kind of repeated in a couple other times, so if you guys could go through, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I see. Would it be fine for the rest of the committee to move the college process for seniors down to October seventh? Is there anything that we lose by pushing that forward?
Have to check with the principals.
Yeah, I would say, let me check with principals, because they put their names in these different places. So if you don't mind my getting off of them and coming back to you.
Be a better schedule for them too, so.
Same with camp wing, could move from October twenty first to November third.
I mean, some of these things are, you know, the monthly update is very quick, there are some things that are very, it looks daunting, but.
Right, a lot of it, you know, a lot of it is redundancy and enroll, as I said, the enrollment, but it's a marker.
Right.
It's a placeholder so that you know it's happening. No, I like, I like the fact that it's got that repetitive use, because it holds us accountable to revisiting topics that we need to, so that's great. The, the, one comment that I had, I liked how you had the special education presentation from Mary coming right up front on September sixteenth. And I think we had talked as a committee about having them quarterly at Theater Back in January, which is great, because that'll be right during the meet of the budget discussions. I saw the, one more on May eighteenth. I guess my comment was, I didn't, it wasn't wed to the quarterly idea, but that gets us three updates. I think for, from our perspective, we found pretty big leaps between January and May. So that was my one concern, was that is there, it may change year to year, but January seemed important because it was kind of concurrent with when we were doing a lot of budget work, but then it seemed really late to wait until May, which is almost kind of a year-end wrap-up. So I guess my thought process was, is it important, maybe we move the May eighteenth one up a little bit and then we insert a year-end one?
Okay, so what do you think? Because I want to talk, I have to talk about your dates, but so.
We've got a question from the audience who I think might have us wrong.
Yes.
No, and I understand the moving it up, Holly Childs, Stephen, President. Understand moving it up, but a lot of the end of the year annual reviews of the children who are, of students who are on IEPs will happen, May, April, May, June.
Okay.
So if you have it too early, you're going to miss, you might be missing some of those things, like what happened this past year, where we did, sped, had to come in and discuss budgetary issue. So you don't want to wait too long, but I think May, that might be pretty accurate.
Okay.
Maybe a week or two off, but that might be, as you talk about the January meeting being the meat potatoes of budget. May eighteenth is kind of right in the meat of annual reviews for the students.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion for you too? It is there in May, and I know the committee had talked to me about having three meetings in place in March, because it's a budget month. We could ask Mary if she could at least have a holding place, maybe on March second or March sixteenth, and if you don't need her to come, we'll take her out.
Yeah.
But then you'll know that's one last check in. But I would have to check the date with her, so you tell me where you want me to maybe look at for a date and I will.
Okay. I was thinking the same thing and looking at March sixteenth, which has nothing leaked, because I would like to be able to review the sped budget prior to the public hearing, because last year we had some changes to the budget at the public hearings.
Right.
I would, I would like to have that update, March second or sixteenth, whatever, but prior to that hearing.
Right.
May have a request? Are we put the sixteenth in in case we need a third meeting? Do you want something already in there, presuming you will need a third meeting, or do you?
Or you can put it on the second and then we can be flexible.
All right, so let me check with Mary and see if that works for her. Thank you.
Also, I have a comment here. Do we know when the town election is?
For, in May?
Yeah.
Second Saturday, is my understanding.
Because typically, the superintendent's evaluation is done with senior members of the school committing, so putting it in June won't work.
And I would defer to the subcommittee's calendar that they're developing around what that sounds like.
We might need to move that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay? Yes?
I just had a question, looking at the agenda, proposed agenda for November eighteenth, just from past experience, Louise will be reporting out on the MCAS results. Sometimes the private school enrollment report and just conversations with Carolyn can go a little bit longer. And I'm worried, these other items might be fairly quick. But those tend to be longer conversations, especially Louise's report. So I don't know if there's anything that could be moved to December second.
December second. Or do you think that, do you think that the MCAS results will be ready for November third meeting?
Doubt it. I doubt it.
And how about the private school enrollment report then? Because last year, that was in September.
I will ask Carolyn, this is the date you chose. I made a note so you would see that, but if she had chosen, it may get later, so.
But November third would still be later.
I will ask.
It's two months after, so maybe we could move that into there.
So I will have to let you know at the next meeting.
And we will still have to move things.
Of course. Load balance.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Jean?
Yes.
Sorry. One of the things that we had put on for periodic updates, Katie and I were looking at this way back in June or July, was, and I like this wrong this year tonight, can we pencil in, Ron? You know, and maybe that will help, you know, because we should be looking at fall relatively soon after the fall season ends and winter and spring. So, you know, December sixteenth could be fall.
Or December second. That might be tight right after they end, that's really tight.
They could still be in tournament.
Yeah. Because last year, they played the week after Thanksgiving.
Right, and it might not be complete, but it could just be an update.
It probably won't be complete, but we can give you an update.
Mrs. Gillis?
Patty Gillis, four ninety-two, she was on the road. How many times do you security and technology on the agenda? How many times do you have to bring that, recently, and check it out? One, two, three, four, five, six. So.
I haven't finished.
There's something every month. So Ellen, do you have some other proposed? Oh, so I would, I would do winter, I would do the fall sports on December sixteen. You could do the winter sports on March second or the sixteen.
Let's do the sixteen.
And then you could do the spring on the last meeting, June fifteen.
You need to be ready by then, because you're doing the end of the year.
Well, we probably should do, I mean, I would think we could do that, but then we'll do it end of the year, maybe, like when we do it end of the year.
Yeah, in July.
Oh, I just took July, you know, because then they have everything together.
Yeah.
I know you're not going up that far, but.
Matt, I suggest that we kind of give ourselves credit, since we're going to be, we're using this year in and year out, it might be helpful to actually put what we did on the twelfth and the nineteenth on here, so that next year, when we look at this again.
Sure.
And that'll remind us to have the year-end review on August nineteenth, in August for athletics. It'll be a full year review. In August for athletics.
Oh, I know, I know these are the things that we had talked about, what about a meeting with the SRO?
Having him come in. He's coming on September second. This one in your packet, and we had put that in there, but he's due September second.
Okay, great.
And I'm sure he can come back and visit if you desire, but September second.
Yeah, maybe a mid-year, you know, touch point with him would be good, to not, you know, how he's found the district sometime after the holidays.
So we can ask him when he comes.
Yeah.
And do we have our senator representative on here?
Remember, we had that conversation?
I knew that I had seen it.
Yeah, I had said to you, rather than having them come in March or April, when everything's over, let's call and have them come in February.
Okay. I knew I had seen it.
Actually, February third. When it makes more sense for you.
I feel kind of badly that we didn't invite them to share.
Chris invited him to that fiscal forecast meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
He only made that.
Came for three minutes.
Yeah.
There's a lot going on at night.
So just a couple of things, I was just, I want to make sure that what we just stated publicly in our goals in terms of open or public hearings are reflected in this calendar. So I think we've captured the one that we were just talking about in terms of the operating protocols. I think that we need to slot a public hearing in April regarding the, the report card. We said, hold a public hearing to review and collect public comment by April two thousand sixteen, so.
Well, the April sixth meeting, maybe we could do it prior to the April sixth meeting? When we do the school choice hearing, I don't know if you, you haven't come to that?
No, I'm not.
No, that is typically at six thirty or six forty-five.
Okay.
Right, immediately before our regularly scheduled meetings, so we could slot it in there.
Okay. So we could do a public hearing for school choice and the report card?
No, no, that would be two separate nights. I'm just saying, for April sixth, we could do the public hearing that Katie was just talking about.
I have the school choice hearing for June first.
Oh, okay.
So that's on, I'm sorry.
The report card, goal number one, on April sixth, yes. Then we had talked about, we actually have May fourth for the strategic plan. I think maybe we just add a parenthetical that we say that there's going to be a public hearing also on that, because again, in our goals, we had stated that we would hold a public hearing to review and receive public comment by May two thousand sixteen. Again, if we don't, if we're not done with the strategic plan.
Yeah, typically, districts don't generally have a public hearing for the strategic plan, but I mean, it's something we can certainly consider.
As a committee, I think that we had included in our goal, so I think it's a good, it's a good point to pause, if that's not, not something that you feel comfortable with. But on the other hand.
I think that the community wants to feel that they're part of that, that process. And that's, that's what this, the purpose of the public hearing is, it honors that commitment to the community, that we're creating this strategic plan to benefit the district.
Right, I'm not disregarding that, I'm just commenting that it's standard, it has not been what a district does. It's usually brought before the committee and the committee makes a decision.
Someone trail lasers.
You can consider yourself that, absolutely, I would never disagree.
All right, and then, these weren't public hearings, but I think in June, we just need to note that we had committed as a committee to prepare the final report card and publish the strategic plan, so we can, as long as we can capture those thoughts in the June first or June fifteenth meeting. We could say something like, final review of report card for FY sixteen. And then, final review of strategic plan.
Yeah, for June first? The strategic plan is on for June first.
So, right, so, okay, so let's, I'm sorry, I missed that. So let's, let's just make that kind of the final review.
Yeah.
And maybe the one that was missing was the report card.
The report card, yeah.
So let's put that on the fifteenth.
Which one, the report card?
The report card, because we already had strategic plan on the first.
Right, I just added the words final review to that.
And we'll put the final review of the report card on June fifteenth, just to kind of separate them, because it's a lot for us to digest.
So are the handbooks and the school improvement plans, so.
Yeah, that's a.
That's another sneakover meeting.
And we really can't push that up because of the graduation being so close to June first, they just can't handle all that.
Could I make one suggestion around the handbooks? And I know that I've heard at least one principal voice this, which is, if you gave me until your July or August meeting, I could be more thoughtful. So is there any, I understand around the school improvement plans, we want to get that done, but the, the handbooks need to be ready for the opening of the following school year, so there's a little bit more wiggle time.
I can speak to them. I think it's partly tradition, I think it's partly because of the time in the year, but I'm happy to take that back to them and ask for their sentiments. So you're asking for the handbooks to be brought forward when?
I'm saying, bring it forward at a July or August meeting.
There's a deadline, you have to complete it before the school year. You have a DESI requirement.
Oh, you have a DESI requirement for the handbooks?
That's why that's there then, yes.
Oh, okay, well then, then you can disregard your principal's.
Okay.
Comment to move it. Oh, okay, well then, then you can disregard your principals' comment to move it to summer work.
Okay, I thought you were looking to put it back in like May.
No, no, the point, the, the point that I had heard was it's, it's work at the end of the year on top of school improvement plan and on top of everything else that's going on. But if there's a DESI requirement, then we can't push it.
Right, we can't. Jean?
Yes.
Does it make sense to separate those two items out and to put, um, school improvement plans may not be completed, but to put the handbooks then on June first? Or is it just, is it easier for the principals, they're here, just to do it all?
It's really ease, it has to do with the ease of coming out and meeting, that's a lot of it right there. I mean, I can certainly present that to the elementary sector, but I am positive that Caroline, on top, because the next night is, um, awards night.
Yeah.
And then the next night, you know, there's so many things that it's just hard that way for her.
Then do you think that maybe we could have the elementary school handbooks and school improvement plans on that June first meeting and keep the?
I will be glad to ask them.
And keep the, the high school one on the second meeting, on the June fifteenth meeting?
Nice to meet tradition.
So I will see them, I will see them tomorrow, let's see if I can catch them Friday.
Jean?
Yes.
Question in the audience?
Sorry, I'm writing slowly, yes.
Is NISAC coming in again to do another exam of our schools, or the, I don't know, how often they come in?
NIAS, NIAS. Once every ten years.
Yeah, once every ten years, oh, okay.
So we have a ways.
But it's a big spam.
Yeah, it's a big spam. And they've just gone through a major overhaul, so the next time they come, it's gonna look very different.
That's, so. Barbara, do you think either by the sixteenth, maybe September sixteenth, we'll have the answers to these questions that were posed to you in terms of, um?
Oh, all these changes?
Yeah.
Oh, they'll be in the email tonight when I get home. I think we should have our answers.
Yeah, so we'll get a new copy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. No, you're not gonna use this copy, I'll put this. I hope you can be able to read my own copy.
Great.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's great, so helpful.
So the next item on the agenda is the benchmarking report card. And actually, that probably should have been in superintendent's section. So Barbara, if you could lead us through that.
I, I actually can't because I believe Mary was, well, you had started somebody, Ellen. Had put this all together, so I think it's unfair that we respect Ellen for doing the work she did.
Okay.
You're right.
So this, this is a first pass, and then I have, um, and I apologize if it's so small, I'll send it to you electronically.
Is that a riot?
But, yeah, you can have to get your glasses, you just look for the red, though, that, that's fine. So.
You're gonna love this.
So as we begin to. Yeah, yeah. And I'll send it electronically. Yeah, yeah, so we'll.
That doesn't help.
I know, it's like. We'll get to that one last. So, we benchmark certain districts for some other projects that we had been working on in the la, over the course of the last couple of months. And so, the thought was, well, why not start with those districts? Because we felt they were pertinent to, to the other project we had, um, as a start. So I, honestly, I just went on DESI, and this is where all the information is. And the first page goes through the enrollment. The number, well, so the, the districts are Cohasset, Situate, Duxbury, Hingham, Norwell, Hull, Dover, Shoreborne, and Weston. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five of the districts are geographically, um, close. And then DS and Weston are high performing districts that we look to for achievements. And so you can see the enrollment. We are kind of on the lower end. Situate, Situate is, you know, over three thou, Situate, Duxbury are over three thousand, Norwell's over two, Duxbury's over, Hingham's over four thousand. So the districts vary in size. Looked at the dropout rate, which is in the, um, tenths of percent. And again, with a small district like Cohasset, you have one out of a hundred drop, it's gonna move your, um, dropout rate, graduation rate. Again, the same thing when you have small numbers, it really, uh, in twenty fifteen, for a lot of these, uh, data elements are not reported on DESI. Percent to higher education, whether it was a two-year or a four-year, a public or a private, um, has only been reported on DESI through two thousand and thirteen. We're all pretty similar in that, um, percentage ranges from eighty seven, eighty-eight percent to ninety-two percent in Dover. Student-teacher ratio, um, we're, we're right in the middle of all the districts. A marked drop down to thirteen point nine students per teacher from last year at sixteen-four. The average class size, and then the number of classes, I believe the number of classes is how many classes we offer. Is that?
So that's kind of the, the, the whole course.
That's the full, K through twelve.
That's all grades.
It's all grades, it's every class authored from, you know, AP Euro to kind of kindergarten math. Um, and then the number of students, so if you take the enrollment and the number of classes, it should work out. I didn't test the math. I figured it's DESI, it should be correct.
We hope.
And then the rankings, the external rankings that we've talked about in the past in our history. So that's just hard fact, it's not, they're not trends, they're not indicators of performance, they're just really trends. They're, I mean, they're just statistics about each of the districts and how we are. The next page is the SAT performance by district. Again, for all of the same districts, we are right in the middle of performance against our, uh, neighbors and the high, the higher performing districts. Um, you know, Dover and Weston are higher performing, so their SAT scores are higher. What's interesting to note is that there really is very little movement in any of the districts from year to year in terms of the total SAT number. Nobody is jumping a hundred points in any given year. Cohasset last year, twenty fourteen, the total was sixteen eighty-seven, the year before was sixteen fifty-eight. Situate dropped from the year before by, um, thirty-two points. Duxbury dropped by eight. Hingham went up by eighteen thirty-four, fifty-two points. Norwell went up, Hull, Hull went up a hundred points, that's the biggest increase. So, we're almost at seventeen hundred, Dover is at eighteen sixty, and Weston is at eighteen hundred. But again, nobody really moves, so, you know, it would be an interesting, um, an interesting thing to figure out, how can we move, i- if we can, how can we move our SATs, or are they what they are?
But to me, it was interesting that, um, the two top performing districts, and this has been true since I've been looking at this, that they're generally, you know, ten percent higher than we are. It almost feels to me like we need to understand what, if anything, they're doing differently programmatically. So I think it gives us an opportunity to go up and potentially interview Dover, Shoreborne, or Weston and, and specifically query as it relates to SATs. That's, that ten percent makes a huge difference in terms of your potential application pool.
It, it does, I will, also, I know Ellen had, you know, we've had these conversations as well, and I, I think it would be a good point to further this conversation with Louise Demas at the table as well. One of the things that, um, I hadn't brought up in we had our last conversation, that I probably should bring up now, is that possibly some of these other districts will have levels that are tightly adhered to, so that you are honors or advanced placement or curricula, uh, college level. But the fact is, you don't have to be, in our case, any student can take an AP class, there are no restrictions. And in other districts, you have to be recommended by the teacher and approved to get into some of the courses. So I think if you do do interview, I think one of the things you need to ask is if they track. They could track levels that are, you know, finite, that you must meet a certain criteria in order to enter those levels. Whereas we don't have that at all in the school districts, so anybody could actually challenge themselves and, and go into any class.
That doesn't impact SATs, though. And I would be interested to know if any of these districts offer SAT prep as part of their curriculum, because some school districts do.
Some do, absolutely, absolutely.
But I think having Louise Demas at the table would be really appropriate, too.
This is a, from my perspective, an ongoing conversation.
Absolutely, yeah.
This is a first pass, and this is an amazing first pass to get this data.
Oh, no, it is, it is absolutely tremendous, um, and I had one other comment when you're done going through, I just wanted to ask you about.
Okay, so, so the takeaways on this is, we want to find out, if possible, at DS and Weston, the higher performing district, how are they achieving these scores? And is their curriculum such that the, the, the kids are placed at levels that they're supposed to be at and it's not, okay, enrollment, in, essentially? Okay, and do they offer SAT prep? Okay. And then the, uh, the next page that we looked at were the AP test results and performance by district. This I thought was really kind of interesting, and I was, um, I was pleasantly surprised that DESI had this kind of information, to be honest with you. So, in two thousand FY fourteen, so a year ago, Cohasset had two hundred and thirteen AP tests taken with a hundred and thirty-three unique test takers. So that means not every, um, every test was a unique student. Seventy-two kids took one test, forty-three took two, seventeen took three, and one took four. Thirteen percent of the scores were a one or a two, and eighty-seven percent of the scores were a three or two, five. Which is pretty good. Situate's, so three to five is passing and three to five to get college credit. Situate was at seventy percent, Duxbury was at eighty-one, Hingham was at ninety-seven, Norwell was at seventy-six, Hull was at forty-seven, DS was at ninety-five, and Weston was at eighty-three. We had no students take five or more tests. DS had sixteen and Weston had ten. So, um, we're in, we're in the thick of it, but then if you look at it, and I only looked at Cohasset year by year, and if the committee would like me to, I'll go back and look at the other districts year by year. In FY thirteen, ninety-four percent of the kids, ninety-four percent of the tests scored three to five. So that's very, very good. FY twelve, it was eighty-three percent, FY eleven, it was eighty-one percent. So I don't know if that speaks to, uh, well, it speaks, it speaks to the, the tests that get taken and what gets scored. And then, um, then we have it broken down by the actual AP class, um, throughout, for the, the four years for Cohasset. I'll just hit on some highlights instead of all of them. English, English language composition, um, ninety-one percent of the, the tests scored three to five. In fiscal year fourteen, um, let's see, what's another interesting one? Economics?
Yeah.
Yeah, in economics, macroeconomics, it, a hundred percent of the kids scored between a three and a five, meaning they passed and, um, they got college credit. The year before it was ninety-seven. U.S. history was ninety-one percent, up from eighty-three percent the year before. That, I'm sorry, that was European history, did I say U.S.? I meant European. A.V. calculus was eighty-three percent. Some classes, and I don't, I don't understand this, but some classes recorded tests being taken but no scores. Does that mean that the kids opted not to have their scores reported?
Could be.
Like, like in a language or something like that? Statistics, eighty-seven percent scored a three to a five, the year before was ninety-seven percent. I, I was trying to see if there was a correlation, and, and I, I honestly don't know who the instructors were other than statistics, but, you know, is there a correlation between who's teaching in what year? Or is there a correlation between the kid's performance? Uh, I don't, I don't know, but, um, I didn't really see a specific trend in any of this.
Yes, Miss Gillis.
Yeah. I thought this was fascinating, um, partly because there's been a lot of conversation lately that the AP scores are not as robust as they should be. And this seems to indicate that we're, as you said, Ellen, we're right in the thick of it. I mean, there's always room to get better, and certain subjects, the district really seems to excel. For sure. Which is impressive.
Right. And I don't, I don't know, do, do the teachers who teach this, do they get their results?
Well, they, it's shared with them, yes.
Okay.
They're shared, they're shared, absolutely.
Because it would be interesting their perspective, because, you know, is it because we have more kids? We had a hundred and thirty-three more kids take, we had a hundred and thirty-three kids take tests compared to a hundred and twenty. So to your earlier point, are, are we having kids take tests that might not be as successful as we want them to be? And is that driving some of the numbers?
Could very well be, only because there are no restrictions for taking, signing up for the class, and there's no restrictions unless you're in the class, you certainly are invited to take the test.
Right.
Absolutely. So one of the other things that might be interesting to find out is among these other districts, who else might have an open enrollment policy for that?
Yep.
Should be in the program of study.
Yeah.
Should be. Really think so.
I can look that up. Barbara has a question.
Barbara, second to some teachers on that? Um, I just have a question, I don't know if there's a correlation or not, but, um, it'd sort of be interesting to look at in terms of the SAT scores and, um, and MCAST results for the same students. I'm just curious, you, MCAST, you're probably gonna have a, maybe less variation, but maybe it gives you some indication of what that cohort of students is looking like? So you can see, it's like, this is just incredibly talented. Are we tracking similarly on SAT, on MCAST, and then all of a sudden, there's a real difference in the SAT? I mean, it could be just the difference in test, or it could indicate something about preparation, I don't know. And then just as a side note, I know Hingham is definitely strict about their, who's taking their AP courses. Because I remember trying to, um, see if the student could get in into an AP course, and they were like, absolutely not. Didn't take this course, you did not get this, you, like, they were like, no way, uh-uh, not happening. So they're, they're pretty strict about it. And then there's just the other thing in terms of actual AP tests, I think they have, um, I'm starting thinking SAT twos.
You thinking about the subject test?
I think I'm thinking about subject tests, actually, because, yeah, I mean, it's, I'm thinking subject tests, but some tests are, they, um, it's our.
They parallel one another.
Well, and some, some are just, you're not gonna score as well on those particular tests, and nobody does, so that, that could. And I don't know if that's true in APs as well, it's definitely with SAT twos, like, you know, what percentage of people nationally taking a test get a four? So we might not be so off getting threes and twos because nobody does well on whatever test.
That's right.
So. But that'd just be, I'm sure they have the data on that website or something piece as well.
Yes, Katie?
I just have one, um, one comment, and it goes back to the first page, just in terms of more macro data, um, around total. We have a lot of data about kind of the overall school district, but one, um, that we hadn't captured yet was kind of that total expenditures per pupil.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I had, I had two, two more points after we went through the, the data.
Okay, great.
So then the, the very little, little piece of paper, which I'll send you electronically, shows the MCAST results. And, um, I'm just gonna summarize, our tenth grade scores, I think, relative to the benchmarked districts are very good. We score in the advanced, you know, we're. Um, we score in the advanced, you know, we're the highest percentages in advanced in grade ten English Language Arts and Mathematics, and we have one of the higher, um, ratings in the proficient for Science and Technology. Um, the red indicates that we're in the top two in either advanced or proficient. So we seem to have a fair amount of, um, good performance, you know, at least in the eighth grade and the tenth grade. And, um, what we've seen as we get to some of the lower grades, and Mary Barbara and I talked about this earlier, is some, some areas of opportunity in our middle school, um, results to, to push kids from needs improvement into proficient and proficient into advanced, and particularly in the English Language Arts, um, area. Um, where Barbara said that they're work, they've been working on the writing. So again, it's just another, um, parameter. I know it's tiny, I apologize. I can't, I can't, I tried to explode it, and then I actually lost it, so, um. But if you spend enough time on Desi, you can find most any kind of information you want to find. So, um, again, just something to, to digest. I don't even know how many data points are on this. So my, my two callouts, um, on this whole project would be, one, do we like the districts? Do we want to add districts? Um, do we want to take districts off? Um, and we do or don't have to answer these questions tonight. And then what are some of the other, um, data points that we want to look at? We just talked about per pupil expenditure.
I would say the type of schedule. Um, and I did share with Ellen today, and I think you had read it, Katie, the block schedule study report that was done last year.
Yeah.
Um.
Is that a high school schedule format?
Right, and you will find that data for half of these districts in that report.
Okay.
Um, and just another interesting data point. Um, probably maybe as it relates to SATs more than, you know.
Katie?
I had one, um, observation around MCAST, and it was from that South Shore Charter School. Um, they used a different format in terms of looking at MCAST scores. They took what was the class, the graduating class of two thousand and fifteen, and they took their MCAST scores since third grade and trend lined them. So what I was kind of reflecting a little bit on what Barb was saying, it gave you a sense of whether that particular cohort was progressing with the curriculum. And it gets rid of some of the problems when you start comparing year over year, because there are, are differences, especially in a small district, in some of our cohorts as they go through. So I liked, I don't think we would want to do it for all of the, you know, every single grade level, but perhaps if we took twelve, eleven, and ten, where we had the data points for, that would give you the full spectrum, it might be an interesting thing to start gathering.
So Louise started to do that last year, if not the year before.
Yeah, okay.
Right? So she has that information in that format already?
Okay, that's great.
She presented last year at the meeting, just doing that very thing.
Okay.
And it's really helpful.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I thought the tables that they had in this homework were great.
Barb?
Um, so I just had a sidebar question on the block schedule, which I looked at online a while ago. Um, but I was thinking about another question. Did that, did it address, um, in that report, the number of courses that could potentially be available in the high school if you had one set of schedules versus the other? Is that in there?
Yes, and that, uh, yes, short answer.
Okay.
And we can get you a.
One thing I just wanted to point out, and I think it's worth looking at, is it seemed to, it looks drastic from fourteen, the student teacher ratio from fourteen fifteen to go from sixteen point four to thirteen point nine. We've also had an increase in the number of smaller programs we've put in the district. So that we've added teachers out of necessity, which would drive our numbers, um, the student ratio down. But we've also increased the number of in-house programs that were able to provide for students without leaving, and those programs might only have three students in them.
Okay.
So when you do that, if you've had, you know, two classes of twenty-five, and suddenly you have two classes of twenty-five and a class of three, and then you average the three together, the ratio drops way down.
Okay.
So I would have to look to see why that ratio was really a tremendous drop.
Especially while enrollment's going up.
Uh huh.
Right. So, so, and obviously, there can be things that get footnoted.
Uh huh.
I just don't want everybody to be hiring teachers, homeless teachers.
I mean, so the things in our goals, we talked about as examples, student achievement, classroom size, college readiness, um, college fit, instructional technology and curriculum. Um, I don't know if college readiness and college fit are qualitative. I don't, I, I'm not quite sure how that gets measured.
College fit was, um, it's, it's a tougher one to do, I think it is, more qualitative. The, the college readiness, I think you could point to SAT or AP scores as kind of your alignment around those. But the college fit question was, you know, are students making the right choices in terms of where they're going? Um, so I think it's really, I think we need to have a conversation around what data is, is out there? Um, or could we collect both through qualitative and quantitative? To see if we're matching people correctly when it comes to their choices.
Yeah, a little bit about what we spoke about today.
Right, right, right. Any other districts we want to add?
I think this is a lot.
Any we want to take off?
Well, we seem to like to compare ourselves to Dover, Sherburne, and Weston.
I mean, there are a lot of hyper, I mean, Westwood is a very high performing district. And Needham is a very high performing district. Um, there's, there's a lot that we could, I mean, there's no urban, you know, there's no Metro West.
Right.
I mean, part of the reason for including Dover Sherburne, and from my rationale, was not only high performing, but the size of the district.
Right, yeah.
They're, they're a small district that's high performing, and somehow they're figuring out how to do it. And they have a tax base that's similar to ours in terms of it's real estate driven. So for me, it's, I always look at them and say, okay, if they're doing it, we've got to be able to, we have to do it.
Right. Their, and their per pupil expenditures are vastly higher. Significantly more.
Right. I mean, do we want to have, add in average real estate transaction, or add in demographic data?
I had so some, we had talked in the goals about socioeconomic, and so, um, I do think that maybe some per capita income, which is, would be easy to get, um, is an important factor, um.
Right. Okay.
This is Childs.
Um, just a quick question, we were discussing this. Uh, is Norwell in there? We heard the list.
Norwell?
Yes. Norwell was in there?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard whole, Hingham, Cituate.
All of the surrounding towns are in here?
Except for Marshfield.
And then, except for Marshfield. And then the, that actually would be kind of interesting to see, but I, I think we have a lot of towns here that we're, that we're looking at.
Okay.
Um, and then the two others elsewhere that are similarly sized to us, I think that.
The only other one that I think you might want to add is Harvard, um, and that was consistently used. It's a very similar size. The student enrollment is almost identical, and their cost per pupil is almost identical.
Okay, and they have no industry, so they rely on real estate lineups.
Yeah, so maybe Harvard would be a good addition.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good. You'll find.
That does come up a lot, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Uh huh.
I did have one, um, question jotted down to myself about whether there was anything that we wanted to capture around special education in terms of a driver, in terms of the district profile?
Uh huh.
And also if there's anything publicly available that would help us to begin to benchmark what our district looks like versus other districts? Is it tough?
I think we'd have to really reflect on that, because obviously, there's some privacy issues that would not expose some of what they have. I think the kinds of things you could compare is clearly, um, programs that exist within schools. You know, districts will have programs. I know, so for instance, Wellesley has a program called the Bridge Program at the high school level. We don't have something at the high school level like that, where we have a support mechanism. So I think you, you'd have to do is look at everybody's programs, maybe, that they offer, and, um, number of teachers, number of students served, but beyond, you know, you wouldn't be able to detail the information on this. You wouldn't be able to segue, you know, segment out and say, well, students who are part of, who are on IPs scored this in the MCAST versus.
No, I mean, I, I'm operating, I'm operating at a very high level on that in terms of.
Well, if, if the budgets are all online, you could, you could do, you could do the budget as a percentage of total.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know.
Absolutely.
And then, I'll see what I can dig out.
After the last mass conference that I went to, um, I came back and tried to investigate some of the, um, the budgets. They're not, not all of them are online, but maybe, maybe the ones in this group are.
Okay, well, I'll see what I can find. Yeah.
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 And ours is online on the new website already.
Posted. Very good.
I mean, I think, you know.
This is great.
It is.
I, I don't know when twenty fifteen gets updated for the, the data points that are missing, but, you know, just keep checking, and I think we'll be ahead of schedule this.
I was gonna ask if it's in that MISC.
No. No, it's not in that report that we have.
Okay.
All right, any more questions?
Financial data won't get updated until September thirtieth.
Okay.
Okay.
At least.
For fifteen.
All right.
Um, Ellen's done an amazing job assembling the data to date, and more work to be done as we go along. I, just a process thought was, once we get all this data assembled, and we've had a couple chances to revisit it, I think it would be interesting to develop a list of questions where we could go out and qualitatively have some selective conversations with districts. Because I think the data is, is really interesting, and we may be able to draw some conclusions from just the data alone. But I think taking that data and then developing a list of qualitative questions, we want to talk to people in those districts to help inform us, um, a little bit further, a little bit along the lines of some of the SAT kinds of questions we were having. I think, let's get all the data together, let's come up with a plan around how we qualitatively assess some of this, and that will really help us put together our comprehensive benchmarking, um, or report card.
And then we can make it look pretty.
Yeah.
No, I mean, ju- just interesting, you know, because, because it, it's a lot of numbers and statistics, and I, I think, you know, graphs and charts, I think, are, are good things.
We could add a twelve hundred book.
There you go.
Mary. Just a quick comment. Um, so I shared with you the block study schedule group. Um, I think it might be useful to connect with Brian Scott at some point, because he was interviewing a lot of other districts.
Oh, okay, yeah.
As well, and you'll find the districts that he included. We have about half of them in our report already here, but he's already made contact. So there, either there's some relationships already formed, or we might already have the answers to some questions.
Great. You know, there, there are other things, like if you look at some of the, um, U S News, and I think it was U S, no, it was Boston Magazine. Do we want to look at, you know, the number of sports that are offered, number of varsity sports, and the number of clubs? Or, you know, i- is that what we really want to evaluate ourselves against with, with these districts? Um, so I think if, as everybody digests, because it's a lot to absorb in, in a single evening, if you have other, you know, things, oh, can you see if you can find us out, or whatever, just shoot me an email or whatever, let me know. And you can see if we can, you know, find out that info.
And this, this kind of reads to me, I realize we'll, we'll set our benchmarking report card for this year, but as a living document, that there might be something next year that we decide we really want to look at?
Right.
Um, and you have the data. And it, but once it's already, once the foundation's there, it won't, that won't be that difficult, but, yeah.
Right. I'd like to, I'll look at Desi more and see what else is out there, and throw it out to the group for maybe the next meeting. Like, these are the other types of information that we can get off, off there.
That'd be great. Thank you for doing all of this. Any more questions or comments on this? No? Okay. Um, I would like to move the next discussion point to our next meeting. Okay, so discussion of paperless meetings, devices for school committees use. If we could move that to September second. And I, and I, no, it's just an agenda update. And hopefully, they'll be air conditioned when we get there.
You might regret saying that, and it was so cold in there.
Oh, no, I can bring a sweater. Okay, so, reports from subcommittees of the school committee.
Well, it's not a subcommittee, but Katie and I did connect with Elder Affairs. So they took August off, and their next meeting is September twelfth, I believe.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So I'm not able to attend that. So Katie and I will be tag teaming those meetings throughout the year.
That's great.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, I did attend the Alternative Energy Committee meeting on Monday night, and they were very grateful for our policy adoption. And I forwarded to everyone today a copy of the energy reduction plan. So that will, should be in our packets for next time, so that we can, you know, look at that. We should read it fully before the meeting, but what we need to do is develop a statement adopting, or, and, I can't even think of the word that I want now, I'm too hot. To, in support of the energy reduction plan. And that plan is a draft that was put together by the, um, co-chair of that committee. It's still in process, but we do need to have a statement to include in the plan, and we do need to vote on it as a school committee. So if you could just take a look at the information that I sent out today. I just figured it would be better to have it ahead of time, so that you didn't have quite so much information to go through right prior to the meeting. And then Barbara, if you could include that in the next packet, that would be great.
Yep.
Um, also, um, this is not a report from a subcommittee, but, um, I would like to ask the committee for a moment of silence from Margie Murphy, who passed away sometime during the day. Um, Margie was a teacher. She was a librarian at the Deer Hill School. She was a member of the Superintendent Search Committee and was a member of the, for several years of the Deer Hill School Council.
Yeah, awesome script.
So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Um, is there anything for follow-up, uh, updates? I think we touched upon everything that we had on our, as our side notes for at our last meeting, so I don't think that, I, I don't have anything. Anybody else?
I just wanted to add one thing on, um, not subcommittee, but just information for you guys. We have been talking about, um, the fiscal forecasting meetings, and when I met with Chris earlier this week, he, he did say that he's in the process of kind of finishing his, finishing his polling. But, um, on, on the scheduling point, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. That piece he's, he's locking in. Um, he is going to propose a series of meetings, starting Thursday, October first, running every other Thursday, with the exception of Thanksgiving, through, um, Thursday, um, December third.
Thursday, October what?
Um, first.
First.
Yeah. So it'll be the first, the fifteenth.
And every other.
Yeah, exactly. Um, skipping, obviously, Thanksgiving. And the last one will be on, um, the Thursday, December third. More to come in terms of the format, composition, and, and the actual charter, but the dates, I thought, well, it would be good to get up people's calendars.
When are they, hopefully?
They're at, um, they're, last year, if that's precedent, is seven P M. We were just talking about fiscal forecasting meetings. Last year, seven P M, that'd probably be the same time.
There'll be a community room at the school.
And they'll be at the community room at the school.
Great.
And prior to last year, we had a Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and there were members of each of the different financial groups throughout the town. And that kind of fell by the wayside in the shifts and changes in the town government. by the wayside in the shifts and changes in the town government.
I remember you talking about this now.
Yeah, but then Chris reinstituted it in a different format last year.
Yep.
So it's good to know what the schedule will be. Thank you very much. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. We do have reason to go into executive session for the purpose of exemption number three under the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for teachers, and we will return to open session only to adjourn the regular meeting. So could I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved?
Move a second.
Cut that.
And roll call, please.
Hi, Katie Dunham.
Hi, Mary McCultra.
Hi, Ellen Mar.
Hi, Gina Stino. I will say that I need to take a bathroom break. Well. Welcome, Barb.
Thank you.
So if we're in the community.